Good evening, everyone. We will convene the 6:30 session, a little late, at 18:35. And the invocation, please. The contact person who's going to be the invocation, who's going to give it? Anna. I don't have it. Oh. Nancy, would you like to give the invocation tonight?
This Nancy?
Lord, listen to our questions. Give our council members time to think through what they're saying and guide us all to make Canyon Lake a better city. It's a good city already, but we want to make it as good as we can. And we bless all the people that have turned out to come to this meeting. More of us need to come to meetings so that we can learn what's going on and share our opinions with the board so that they have some guidance from us as well. Protect us and take care of us as we leave here to go home. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Nancy. Jim, lead us to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Anna, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor? Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Aaron-Crats?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Green?
Here.
All present.
Okay, has there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are pulling item number eight and then we'll come back at a later meeting.
Number eight.
What, eight? Yes, item eight, yes, item eight.
The approval of the CED application?
In the event there's anyone here who wishes to speak on that item, however, you should take their testimony unless they are willing to return when this item is on the agenda again.
Okay, do we do that now?
No, when you get to the item.
Okay, we'll get to it. All right, got it. Okay, my motion? A motion to... For the agenda, please.
I move.
Second, please.
With Avery's favor.
How low in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Ceremonial matters. We would like to have the Chamber of Commerce announcement, please, Jim?
Good evening, everyone. I'm past president and chamber director, Jim Randall, and would like to thank Mayor Green and the City Council for allowing me to speak. The Chamber would like to say congratulations to our 2018 community award winners, who will be honored at the upcoming Chamber Gala on Saturday, January 26th, at the Lodge. Business of the Year is Friday Flyer. Organization of the Year is Canyon Lake Fine Arts Guild. Citizen of the Year is Mayor of Vice, Jordan Aaron-Crats. Volunteer of the Year is Lynn Hall. Youth of the Year is Ryan Hosking. The gala tickets are $50 apiece and include the dinner and must be purchased in advance. Deadline is... I gotta apologize here, it says Monday, but doesn't say which Monday.
Any Monday.
Yeah, any Monday.
There we go.
Oh, this coming Monday, okay.
You had some help there.
Well, hey, everyone needs a good backup. If you'd like to promote your business, please consider donating a raffle basket for our auction. And Allison Barofano at the Chamber office will be more than happy to help you if you call her. Supervisor Kevin Jeffries will administer the oath of office to our directors. Assemblywoman Melissa Melendez and Debbie Herrera from Senator Stone's office will also be in attendance. Now, the more important things. March 16th, get your green on. It's our annual junior golf tournament. It will be... Sign-up information will be coming out very shortly on that.
Format?
Format is a four-person scrimmage.
Okay.
No tricks, no... Straight up the way you like it, Mr. Mayor. Tournament check-in is at 10:00 AM. Start is at 12:00. And also, it's our third annual ball drop. Balls will go on sale February 1st at Post Pack and Wrap or the Country Club Pro Shop or any council... Any Chamber member will be able to help you.
So how many mulligans is the mayor going to be able to buy?
The mayor is restricted.
That's good. Well, you got me in then.
All right, thanks, Jim. All right, recognition of Veterans Day sponsors. Vicki Warren, would you please come forth? Vicki has gracefully, with a little encouragement, has also will be the chair for the 2019 process, which I think is... Last year was a great one, she says this one's going to even be better. And she'll do the presentations to the sponsors that we had for the event, so take it away, Vicki.
First of all, thank you all for coming. I'm going to start out by having the crew come up, all the volunteers. I want you up here with me as we go through this, everybody who's here. Nancy, I'm looking right at you. Debbie, I'm looking right at you. Jill, all of our... All of the team. The reason I'm doing that is because we... This event, this is an amazing event. If you haven't been, you need to go. We put on... We put on a first-class presentation. We cater to our veterans, we honor them greatly. We have a flyover. Last year, we had, I don't know, six or seven flyovers. But we do an awesome job. And it's done by these volunteers and a few more. Am I coming through on this end?
Yeah, you're coming through.
It feels like it's coming in and out, anyway. This is... I can't stress enough what you're looking at. You're looking at a professional presentation that is done year after year. It gets better year after year, and it is because of this core group. So they're going to be standing up here until I'm done because I want you to see them, honor them, recognize them, and thank them. So let's start with a round of applause first. We also rely heavily on our sponsors. The clubs that Canyon Lake treasures so much are a huge part of this event. This year alone, we raised approximately $5,900 in donations for the 2018 event. So another round of applause for not just our sponsors, but all the... In addition, the clubs do give donations, individuals give donations. So let's start with the silver, and that's donations over $100. Canyon Lake Senior Chair Volleyball. Karen, can you do the honors? Coldwell Banker, is anybody here from Coldwell? Canyon Lake Market, I tried to get him here. All right, thank you. Can you come up, please? Jack Wamsley? Warren would be here, but Warren is babysitting tonight, so Warren is home. We have these beautiful awards. Before I go any further, I'm going to mention this several times. The man standing in the aisle with the phone is a huge, huge part of this event, is that. He does so much for us. The entire staff does, but without Mike's help, it would not be the same. He's brought a professionalism to it that was not there before. He brings so much to our group, and this is just one. He's helped choose these beautiful honors for our donors. So Canyon Lake Senior Chair Volleyball Club, thank you very much. Isn't that beautiful? They really are beautiful. Canyon Lake Market, thank you. Now, in case you don't know, Canyon Lake Market came to help us at the very last minute. I went running in and said, "Oh, my gosh, I don't think we have anybody cooking hot dogs. What can we do?" And Mike said, "Wouldn't you rather have carne asada?" Yeah. But, little hearted. Andy, they try every time, whatever we want. They're wonderful. I stopped in the other day, I'm so glad you're here. Last year, we missed you. And I stopped in and said, you know, "We love you so much," and he said, "It'll be forever." So we appreciate that very much. And Jack Wamsley? And I think, will you be seeing Warren? Okay. And Coldwell Banker, we'll just have to get theirs to them. "We" means Mike. And if any of you would like to say anything, you're welcome.
Well, behalf of Canyon Lake Market, my two bosses, they appreciate your support every time that we need help, you know, in buying groceries in addition to supporting you guys. They say that they were very honored to receive that award because they were respected to be able to receive it this year. So the excellent customer service that we provide is improved.
Thank you. And you can stay up, would you like to say something, Jack?
Well, yes, I'd just like to say that Warren, it's been our pleasure, Warren and I, to supply the funds for all of the flags through, whatever you guys take money-wise, why, Warren and I cover it. And we'll continue to do that, we've done it for many years, and I really think a lot about being veterans. And Warren was in the tanks farther, and I was in the Air Force, so we appreciate the recognition of veterans.
Of course, absolutely. Thank you, Jack. You're welcome to stay, or be seated, whichever you prefer. I think be seated. We have gold sponsors, which is donations over 200. Canyon Lake Fine Arts Guild. Is somebody here?
Yes.
Yes, please. Jenny and Jordan? I think Jenny's doing the honors. And Canyon Lake Chamber of Commerce. Now, these, again, these awards, I think they're just stunning, actually, I think they're beautiful. And Mike was the one who helped make this happen. So Canyon Lake Fine Arts Guild, we appreciate your support, thank you. Mayor Aaron-Crats?
Thank you.
And Canyon Lake Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Jim. Thank you all very much, round of applause. At the top is the premium sponsor, and that is donations over 500. Again, we rely very much on our sponsors to put on the event that we do. The flyovers cost money, the chairs cost money, everything has an expense to it, so we appreciate it very much. I would like to see a CRNR. And again, Coldwell Banker, whoops, sorry. Canyon Lake Car Club? I don't see one here. Canyon Lake Men's Golf Club? Okay. And David and Barbara Sprawl, would you both come up, please? CRNR provides so much to us throughout the year. Canyon Lake relies heavily on CRNR in general. I don't know how your service has been, but I know if I give them a call, I get service immediately. And we really appreciate not just the donation, but they also provide the trashcans and pickup, and they're just wonderful, so thank you very much. These two, they make sure that every year, we have our flyover. And by that, I mean within days of the event, they're in there writing another check so that we make sure that we have a flyover. And it's amazing. Again, if you haven't been, you have to send... It's just two hours. Seems like longer. But it's just two hours, and the two hours is well spent as you sit there and you feel what we feel for our veterans. So thank you both very much for your continuing support and for making sure that we have that to treasure always. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to these folks back here who put a tremendous effort in every year. And the second thing is the crew that does the setup. I don't know who it is, a lot of chairs, staging, a shout-out to them as well. Definitely thank you.
Thank you. And now, to the core of the event, I can't stress that enough. They've always been there, they always will be, right? Right? I'm here, you're here. Our meetings start... We try to start in August, and they go at that time, it's every few weeks, and then we gear up, and pretty soon, we're doing it every week, every couple of days if we need to. They never fail, never fail. Harry? Debbie? I do some of the work. Debbie does the rest. So she's pretending she doesn't. She's like Mike, pretending that she's not that important. There she goes, hiding again, see?
You're the great post office.
Yes, she does. Nancy?
Thank you very much.
Christina? Karen? Thank you. Donna Lovejoy is not here tonight. Jill? Jill! Not only does Jill volunteer, she's there every meeting to give input and help us plan this, but she also does a presentation every year. Each year gets better, and each year is a surprise, and it's wonderful. Thank you. Bert is not here, we're almost done, I promise. I can get back to business. Again, these are the folks. These are the ones that put all the hard work in and make it all happen, so thank you from me, from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vicki. Thank you.
Is that it, Vicki?
That's all.
All right, good job, good job. Round of applause for everybody, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please read the public comment statement?
Thank you, Mayor. Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the City Clerk prior to an individual being heard by the City Council. The City Council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you're commenting on the agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note that if you are addressing the City Council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the City Council may only do the following: refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. I have one card, but it is for item number seven, so we'll go ahead and hear the comments at that time.
Okay. Item seven on the... Item seven, got it. Which has been polled? Got it. Item seven was polled from the agenda, it says...
It does say that. Your paper's wrong.
Oh, my paper's wrong. Okay. My paper's wrong, guys. They gave me a cue, and I'm following it, right? I was following the script, see, all read? Okay. All right, would you please read the consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the City Council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
Okay. Any members would like to pull items off the consent?
I move to approve the consent.
Second?
I second it.
Okay. All in favor? Roll call, excuse me. She's got to do a roll call.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Aaron-Crats?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, since there was no items polled, we'll go on to schedule future events, which are going to be listed, which are listed, not going to be, which are listed on the City webpage and the Friday Flyer. Okay. Business items. Item five.
Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, it's been asked to put this on here, particularly by Councilmember Smith regarding having a joint meeting between the Council and the Directors of the POA Board. And I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Smith, this is kind of his brainchild, it's probably, we think, staff, it's a good idea at least to meet, so you guys can get together on common issues and make sure there's, we know everything that's going on, things like that. So, Councilmember Smith, do you have any comments regarding the...
Absolutely. I think this is, could be a good idea and allow the public to be a part of a meeting that would consist of both bodies of government, so they can see the two in action and see how they work. This would allow for an agenda created by the City, and I think it would be something that we would see quarterly. Throughout the region, we've seen other joint meetings between cities. I think that the POA has a lot of influence on what we're trying to do here in the city, and we as well. So I would love to see this, you know, pushed through, and also, the POA also agrees, and they think this is a good idea, till all the board members are in favor, so.
If I may comment, I am wholeheartedly in favor of this as well. I think that a joint meeting with the POA and the City would be tremendously valuable to all the members of the community.
Well, I'm probably going to be in the minority in this, so I think we already have the roundtable, it's been going on for eight years, and the President of the POA and the General Manager comes to that meeting, as well as another council or board member, and we have the council is there, and we've talked about this for, and we've dealt with every issue in the last eight years until the last six months because of one particular subject. And I think we're letting this getting thing in interfering what we're able to accomplish for so many years, okay? On top of that, we've got two different organizations. One is a private corporation, and another is a government agency, and you can't mix money and things like that. So try to have, we have representative on both the POA and the City, as well as the Water District and the law enforcement, so I think we got that covered pretty well as well. Now, I have also another problem, and that is called protocol, okay? It's not just the City, it's all the agencies that we support. When somebody wants to bring something to the agenda, it has to be first discussed with the council, in the case of the City Council, to find if the council want to do that, okay? Have that discussion. And number two, when we do agree to that, then we're going to put extra work on the staff, okay? And on the agencies, the executive directors are very sensitive about how their staff is being used on time, that they don't necessarily, the Chair of that agency, W.R. Cox, you know, obviously knows that very well, right? And so, we're just mixing issues. And so, I think we should just let, it's worked in the past, we've got representative on both sides, and trying to get five directors and five council members, and we're going to have lawyers on both sides, we're going to have staff on both sides, by the time we... We're going to have 30 people in the room, and it seems like it's a little bit overkill. So I don't understand why what's worked so well so long needs to be changed right now. So I'm, I think it's just, and I hope going forward, before anything is brought to the agenda, Mayor, that we have an agreement beforehand of the council, do they want to take the time to discuss that? And number two, what effect it's going to have on the staff? So that's what we always had in the past, and this is the first time in my time where anybody could just come forward and say, "I want to put it on the agenda."
I would just like to comment and say that this is absolutely the most refreshing thing that I've heard in a long time. We have two new council members who see the necessity of... Well, some of you might remember how I used to end some of my speeches years ago. It went something like this, "Can't we all just get along?" And I think that's the most important thing here in this community. If it doesn't work, if we can't get the Council and the POA to sit down and have a civil conversation, then we'll abandon that, but everything is worth a try, and I certainly think. But with all due respect to the new council members, I appreciate your enthusiasm, and I, Randy, contrary to what you said, I'm still for it, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Since I'm last, I would rather be accused of trying something and not working than not trying it and saying, geez, it just won't work. So I think it's a step. Is it the final step? Absolutely not. But it is, at least gives us an opportunity as a community with two different governing bodies to be, to talk about maybe some common goals and issues that are not so much on the operational side. As far as procedural activities for this council, I'm not aware that I'm in violation of any Robert's Rules of Order, so I guess we'll take that up at a later date. But I do believe it's a good, positive move, and we'll see how it works, and we'll let time be the judge of if it's successful or not. So I guess I will, I don't need to call for a vote on this, do I? No.
Larry, how often is it going to be?
It's suggested at this point to try it on a quarterly basis, and if the quarterly is too frequent, then it could be semi-annual. The idea is just to get it out of the chute and see, see what we've come out with and what kind of discussion items, and I think at the end, by no means are we there to do problem solving, just kind of do some brainstorming. And I'm looking at it as a platform, not so much of what we're currently doing, but maybe what we can do. So a little thing called vision. Both of us have what we think are visions, but maybe our visions are in two different directions. So a vision statement of maybe where we want to be or where we want to go. Obviously, we have ideas about the lake, but how do we get there? What do we need to do? So I think that that's a platform to answer a long, a short question... So, I think that that's a platform to answer, a long, a short question, long, quarterly. Okay. With that, no further discussion. Uh, moving on to item, my two agendas are a little different. This, I'll move to this one, item six, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, City Staff is asking City Council to authorize the City Manager to transfer air quality management district funds into the city's fiscal eighteen nineteen expenditures to purchase a new vehicle for the Code Enforcement Department. At the same time, too, we wanna also ask for authorization, to give authorization to the City Manager to also, also allow him to surplus, um, our, one of our existing vehicles in the Code Enforcement Officer, uh, Office Department. Um, so, just a little bit of history on, with regards to AQMD funds, Assembly Bill twenty-seven sixty-six, subvention program, uh, what it does, it, uh, they, they give funds to cities and counties to meet requirements with regards to federal and state clean air quality acts, so, and the implementation of motor vehicle emission reductions. Uh, in the past, the city has utilized these funds to purchase its city's vehicles, and under the conditions of AQMD, the vehicles are required to be either electric or hybrid, part of the whole emission idea. Um, so, um, fortunately, or successfully, the city has purchased vehicles in the past, have been freight hybrid vehicles, well-used, um, for the most part, they were being used on the B L M areas. And if you all know, the terrain at the B L M area is pretty, pretty rough, the vehicles have sustained quite a bit of time, the lifespan of the vehicle has sort of diminished, and, uh, so we're kinda looking to surplus one of our vehicles that's sort of on its way out. So again, we're, we're just asking City Council to authorize the City Manager to transfer reserve AQMD funds over to our fiscal eighteen nineteen budget, so that we can proceed with the purchase of a new vehicle.
Okay. Questions, Council? Okay. That was pretty easy. Any public comments? Going once, going twice, hearing none? Okay. Direction and motion? Do, I need a motion to move forward with the purchase of this vehicle, is an AQMD piece?
I move it on number six.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
It's to be a roll call.
Roll call, sorry.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Aaron-Crats?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero to approve item number six.
Okay. Item number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council, at the last City Council meeting in December, um, what was brought before you was a resolution or, or, uh, brought before you, Order Number one seventy-eight, to participate in a C C A as members of a J P A, um, for Western Community Energy, um, to look at whether or not, um, C C A purchasing power for the city as opposed to using Edison's generation. Um, it was, uh, voted down three to two at the last meeting, however, the council wanted to revisit this, just to make, I think, just to make sure, uh, with regards to the decision or if there's any changes regarding that.
Or, can I make a correction? Wasn't it, um, two abstained because of the lack of information? It wasn't a three?
Two.
Two, it was, uh, one no, two yes.
Three, one.
Two, two abstains because of information.
You need to be on the pass.
Okay.
It failed to pass.
Failed to pass.
Okay, sorry.
It failed to pass.
Yeah.
Therefore, um, but therefore, the council asked it to come back to be revisited, to discuss it one more time. Um, all the information was there in your package regarding, regarding the ordinance, and then also attached to the ordinance is the First Amendment to the J P A Agreement, which basically spells out that, um, members of the J P A are allowed to get out of the, are allowed to leave the J P A with no fiscal cost to, to the member at all up until the time they purchase power, which is estimated to be October of this year.
Of nineteen?
Yes.
Okay.
For a start date of, I believe, well, it's twenty, twenty, and I believe it's April, April of twenty twenty.
Okay. Questions of staff and council? Jeremy? Questions, questions? Okay. Public comments?
Mayor, I have one card.
Okay.
Rick Bishop.
Welcome, Mr. Bishop.
Good evening, and Happy New Year to you all, Mayor, members of the council, and staff, and members of the audience, Rick Bishop, Executive Director of the West Riverside Council of Governments, also Executive Director of Western Community Energy. Uh, with me is Barbara Spooner, she's our Deputy Executive Director of W R C O G, she's our Director of Operation, C C A Development for Western Community Energy. I've probably run out of my three minutes just giving those introductions, I apologize for that. Um, you know, I do think that the decision that the council made at the last meeting was appropriate in, in the fact that you had two brand-new council members, you know, and so I think that their abstention, um, was, was appropriate, and we've had, you know, some opportunities to speak with them. Um, just very shortly, very briefly, um, we have been looking at C C A development on behalf of our members for really the better part of three years. We've done the feasibility analyses and, uh, and found that it was feasible to move ahead. We do have a J P A that includes, uh, seven members, and the reason we're all doing this is because there's a proven track record among the nineteen C C As that serve eight million residents throughout California, that they're able to demonstrate they save money, they provide local control, they provide choice for their constituents, um, and they provide some economic boosts as well as greenhouse gas emissions reductions, if that's of interest, uh, as it is to some residents. So, it was really those, those major tenants that kinda have, have given us the, the, the thrust to move forward with this. The action before you is really procedural, it's, it's simply procedural, it's something that's required by the C P U C, um, but in doing so, it keeps you at the table, it keeps you in the game. And Mayor, I was struck by your comment earlier on item five, where you mentioned that you'd rather, um, be part of something and, and, and then see it fail than to not be part of something at all, and it kinda struck me that that's exactly what we're talking about here. Um, as the City Manager said, um, the goal right now among the members is that if it's determined to be feasible, and if it's determined that the savings that are projected hold, that service would be provided to your residents, um, in April twenty twenty, if you choose to, to stay on board. But you don't need to make that choice until, as your City Manager said, uh, the fall of this year. And so, that, going back to your comment, this puts the council, I think, in a really, really solid position, um, to gather information, to ask questions, and to be part of a J P A with other cities that are doing the exact same thing, and so we can be all in this together. Um, I think healthy skepticism is appropriate in this venue as well, because we all know that there are a number of questions that still need to be answered, we're all, uh, doing this, um, as a unit. Um, so, um, I think, as I mentioned, that the city is in a really good spot, um, to continue to gather information, to continue to participate in this forum. Uh, there is no obligation, um, financially until that point of purchase, um, and we won't be making that decision, you won't be making that decision, I said, as I mentioned before, um, until the fall. We've submitted our implementation plan to the C P U C, as we mentioned, it's a very conservative estimate of about two percent savings, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it adds up to, I think we even talked about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year or so, um, for your residents. So, uh, that's not a bad chunk of change to be putting back in the pocket, uh, of your constituents, and that's something that, that really excites us. So, um, we think overall, it's, uh, as we mentioned, this is a procedural step, we think it's important for you to stay at the table, we'd love to continue to have you at the table, whether you're for a C C A development or not, but we think there's a lot of questions that continue to need to be answered, and we all wanna work together to get there. Um, so, either Barbara or I'd be happy to answer any questions, but again, we appreciate you, uh, having us here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Questions? Questions, comments?
I don't have any questions, but I have a couple of comments. Sorry. Uh, I have, I have attended the meetings for this new organization, excuse me, since its inception, my way of being on the W R C O G board, and I have to admit that I've been confused for quite some time, and sometimes I'm easily confused. But there, there's a lot more to this than I think that, uh, that we've heard about so far. We've had some terrific explanations by, by Rick and by Barbara, both explaining it to me, and I've been having a little trouble getting my arms around it, but slowly but surely, I'm starting to understand, uh, there's no harm in going forward. We, we have the opportunity to opt out of it. If it doesn't work, if somebody puts something on the table with an opportunity for potential savings, it may not be as much as they say, or it could be more, but I think that we certainly oughta give it a try. And I know all the cities aren't, aren't, are not on board yet, some are taking a wait-and-see attitude, and that's kinda where I was, oh, maybe a few weeks ago. But I'm a little, I'm pretty much convinced now that this is the right direction to go, and I would hope that the rest of the council would support my feelings. And I thank you, and I thank you for all the time you've spent with me trying to make me understand it. It's getting better. Thank you.
No comment?
All right. Then we will direct staff to call for a motion, please. A motion?
I move number seven.
A second. Do we need a second?
Yes.
The motion is to, to go to a vote, so we need a, a motion. We got a motion, and then we need a second.
I'll be happy to second that.
Okay. Now we go to vote. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
No.
Mayor Protem Aaron-Crats?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Mayor Green?
No.
Motion failed.
Item eight is polled. Is there anybody that wants to speak on item eight?
Yes, ma'am. Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Erica Harnick, and I am, uh, the Coachella Valley Senior Representative for the Building Industry Association. I know you've spoken with Clint Laurie-Mar, our Director of Governmental Affairs. Uh, we just wanted to say we really appreciate you pulling the item, and we look forward to collaborating on this and hoping we can get to a compromise. And again, uh, thank you so much and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other comments on hearing none? Okay, we moved to item nine.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, uh, Staff is asking for a condition from City Council to hold a public hearing and approve Resolution Number twenty nineteen dash oh-two for approval of the application from Helping Our People in Elsinore Hope for allocation of the city's, uh, nineteen-twenty uh, Community Development Block Grant, also known as C D B G. Uh, city kinda like annually participates in the, the Community Development Block Grant Program through Riverside County Economic Development Agency. Each year, the city has allocated grant funding that is used towards programs that benefit low to moderate income families, or programs that are out there by public service agencies. Uh, traditionally, in the past, the City Council has always allocated fifteen percent of that funding to nonprofits, uh, but if you recall about, maybe, I think it was the last council meeting or two ago, we, we, we had a discussion, uh, for nineteen-twenty to put all the allocation that we received for, for, for this coming round to, towards public service agencies. Uh, we then opened it up to the public, we received two applications, uh, one of them was Hope, the other one was Helping Hands, here in Canyon Lake. Um, as part of the process between the city and, and the county E D A, we extensively went through the applications to approve to see if the, if the applications met all the requirements of C D B G, which is federal funding under, uh, under HUD. Um, of the two applicants, only one was approved, and that was Hope, so we're asking City Council to approve the allocations for eighteen nine, I'm sorry, nineteen-twenty of C D B G to Hope, and I think the total amounts come out to eighteen thousand two-hundred and seventeen dollars. Questions?
Does Mayor have a question? Does Helping Hope, uh, Hands Group, were they aware of it? Is that true?
Yes, yeah, they, they actually applied, uh, we went through the overview process of the application. Unfortunately, um, it didn't meet the requirements of C D B G, or the requirements that we were hoping for, for C D B G. Uh, I gave them an opportunity to revise the application, I did reach out to, uh, our county folks to see if we can extend, um, extend the, the deadline for the applications where, which they were nice enough to. Um, unfortunately, the revised application also came back that it was still, uh, didn't meet the, the necessary qualifications. So, for that reason alone, we, we would have to accept the one application that, uh, that we did receive and that was approved, which was Hope.
I have a question.
Sure, sure.
Um, it looks like this staff issued a notice about this on October fourth, and applications were due on November fifth. Is there a reason there was only about a month?
We give, we give thirty days for people to submit applications, that's, that's typically the timeframe that we do when, when we open it up.
Was there any kind of publication leading up to that?
Yeah, it's publicized, it's, it's in the Friday Wire, it's in, in, uh, our city website.
Leading up to that notice of the thirty-day window, or did we just tell?
No, actually, what we do is we notice it the following day after we get approved from Council to move forward.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can recommend that you go ahead and open the public hearing now and then take more questions.
Okay. Well, ahead, we'll open the hearing for questions, and the time will be at, uh, at nineteen-twenty-two. Anyone in the audience would like to speak on this? Yes, Jack?
Uh, one thing I just wanted to check on with reference to the grants, uh, has anything developed with reference to conversation on the B L M, uh, considering, uh, grants with reference to purchase?
Uh, this is a different item, Jack, this is a C D B G grant.
Strictly, strictly this one.
Strictly, this, yeah, that, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know what you.
No, it's a different, it's, this is a different.
Okay. I, I didn't know where you were.
No, no.
I just wanted, I thought, well, we need to talk about it, if it's.
No, it's, this is, that's a different item. This is talking about the Community Block Grant, it's specific.
I must've missed something on five, did you guys vote on it, or what did you do with five?
Five was.
That's the business.
That's the P O A meeting, Jack, five is the P O A meeting.
Yeah.
Joint P O A meeting.
Yeah, I, I just didn't hear what.
We already did it.
Yeah, but what'd you do?
Oh, we voted to, to have it.
Oh, okay. I couldn't, I didn't hear it.
Oh, um, can I, can I actually?
I don't think there was a vote on that.
No, it's information. Yeah, to move forward with it, that's my instinct.
Well, I think we need to have a, we did on, on six or seven, but we, why didn't we do on five?
I did not hear.
Did we do a roll call on that?
No, you gave direction to staff.
Gave direction to staff to help me, to?
To, to organize and set up such a meeting.
Yeah, okay. If you want to vote, would, is that procedurally go back and vote?
We want to finish this item.
We'll finish this item, we'll go back to five. Okay. Thanks.
Mayor?
Yes.
For the record, the affidavit of publication calling the public hearing is on file in the City Clerk's office, and I have not received any protests or objections for this item.
Okay. Okay.
Want a clarification for item number, not five, right?
Correct.
For the, for the C D B G.
Yes, of course, just wanna make sure we're still on that.
Yeah, we're on, on your agenda is, should be item nine, yes, okay? Okay, we still have it open for discussion from Council. We have public comments, hearing done, hearing no opponents, uh, due response from proponents, um, I call the public hearing closed, and it's closed at seven, at nineteen-twenty-five. Okay. Discussion to Council.
Yeah, I got, okay, so, a couple things, um, Mike, it was clear to me that this was more of a timing mechanism, correct? I mean, we, we did all we could, and, you know, we ran out of time, not only with the county, but also with just applicants, so it's probably twofold. Maybe we didn't advertise enough, um, I know that you have, you and I have had extension conversations, extensive conversations on wanting Helping Hands.
Correct.
To, to get involved, and if I remember correctly. And if I remember correctly, you had mentioned that you did do all you can in the time allowed it to get them up and running to be qualified for those funds. Is that correct?
That's correct, and in fact, I did go back to see if we can get an additional extension. But unfortunately, they were only able to give us two weeks, which is not ample time to really do anything. So realistically, we were, we're pretty much already up against their deadlines. Because what they need to do is they have to submit everything to their board to get all CDPG funding approved for the county.
If I may, to the rest of the council members, Mike and I, I think it was Monday, we started on this?
Yes.
You know, trying to go full-blown. So what we did was, is we came up with three or four different criterias that we could to receive the funds, even being an admin ourselves, and seeing if we can take it on, and then get, give us more time to get Helping Hands ready, because I, like most of you up here, want to keep the funds in Canyon Lake. I think we'd all agree with that.
Yes.
So Mike, also, with that same passion and desire, we did all we could with the county, we did all we could with our local influence. This is the next best thing, is what I'm being told by staff.
Yes.
But more importantly, Mike and I have a meeting Monday with Helping Hands, and we're going to go in 100 miles an hour, so they're ready to go for 2020, so those funds, you know, potentially they can be applicable for those funds.
Not only our funds, too, as well, but we're also going to help them out to see if maybe potentially they can get some of the same funds through the district, and also through county.
Absolutely, and I'm a huge, huge supporter, you know, of this program, so I think it's important that we do that, so...
Okay. Other discussion, excuse me. Other discussion?
Other discussion for council members.
I would say thank you for doing that, because that was, you basically addressed most of the concerns that I had, and highlighted some of the things that I wanted to address. So I appreciate that, because like you, I believe that keeping the funds in Canyon Lake is of paramount importance.
And we'll put all our efforts towards it, and make sure that we're going to help out Helping Hands as much as we can to, to make sure that's, that happens for next year.
I think Mike even agreed to go door-to-door with me, so...
That's, yes.
Jordan?
Well, if I'm reading, excuse me. If I'm reading this correctly, it looks like Hope certainly does provide an awful lot here for Canyon Lake. It says they'll provide 3,600 meals per month, 43,000 meals per year, to 100 Canyon Lake residents between July 1st, 2019, June 30th, 2020. I mean, I commend you for wanting to involve any others, and at this particular time, I think we're in good hands with the donation to Hope, and that can change next year, obviously.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, we have our hands tied when it comes to federal funding. We have to follow the guidelines that they put forward, and unfortunately, you know, there's not much we can do, so we have to follow those restrictions, or else funding won't come our way anymore if we don't, if we don't continue their, following their requirements as we move forward, so...
Okay, any other comments from council? Okay. Action by council, approval of resolution. You want to read that, Madam Clerk?
This would be approval of resolution 2019-02, a resolution of the city council of the city of Canyon Lake authorizing the allocation of community development block grant funds for fiscal year 2019-20.
Do, go ahead, and do I hear a second?
Yes, I'll be happy to second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Aaroncrafts?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero to approve resolution number 2019-02.
Okay. Now, back up to item five, which is a business item. And I did realize it was going to go for a vote, so... There's something, oh, okay.
Did you wish to give a specific direction to staff as to when this meeting might be scheduled?
I think what we'll have to do is have staff work with the POA staff and set a date, and several dates, so that, based on calendars and availability. So I think it has to, it's kind of got to be open, but I believe staff should be working with their staff to set the dates, give the several dates, so that we can all agree. Okay, I guess we'll go for the, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
No.
Councilmember Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Aaroncrafts?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried for staff to contact the POA and get further information, some dates.
Correct, order one.
Order one, yes.
Okay, next item is the city manager's comments?
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Now we'll go to committee and council reports, and we'll start with council member Bonner.
Okay, I'm pretty current on RCTC, Riverside County Transportation Commission, which is kind of over from Riverside County. And there's a lot of activity going on. Crane River, if you're familiar with that, there's been a lot of action there because of problem of getting in and out of that area onto the 15, okay? So they're working on that. And within Corona, and something we all need to learn is, I don't know if you knew Karen Spill? Spill, am I saying it right? Spill?
Spiegel?
Huh?
Supervisor Spiegel?
Spiegel. Yeah, Spiegel. She was the mayor, now she's a supervisor, and she's made it a big issue on the RCTC when she was still on there, about the, all the traffic coming into 15 was a nightmare, okay? And we've gone through a long, long pain in Corona, so we're going to make sure that we don't do that again going forward. Now, there's the effort on I-15 going north from Corona up to, I can't remember exactly the words, but up to Ontario, and they're putting in toll lanes on both sides, so that's going to help there. Now, they are, they're starting to design environmental on I-15 south, coming down to 74 Central Avenue from Corona. So that's probably more of a 20, 20, 21, we're going to see the results. At least, they're putting, that is important in their, in the package of the things that we're looking at, okay? Also, this interchange in River Canyon Road has now been funded, so that's going to be being worked very soon. And then, there's a lot of things on, you know, in the desert, but I don't have, I'm not as close to that, but I'm trying to figure out, you know, all those vestades and the things they have. They're trying to get the traffic so people can get out of the desert and be able to entertain or enjoy the vestades. Okay, I want to remember everyone that there is a roundtable next Monday, okay? There's two roundtables. One is the one I talked about earlier, it's the city, the POA, the Water District, and law enforcement. And that goes every, it's Maintenance Day, it's the second Monday of the month in Country Club. There's a second economic development, primarily around the BLM plan, okay? And that's a lot of either, either two or three months, depending on how much activities there is. We're trying to keep it current, so we're staying on top of the BLM. So there's a lot of activity within Riverside County that has to do with transportation and all those type of things. So it's interesting, this is RCTC, and Jeremy's father's on that group, and it was interesting to get to know him a little more today, and we're making a lot of progress there. So that's it, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first off, today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I think it's very important, and it would be remiss if we didn't at least recognize this. I noticed that all my fellow council members are also wearing blue today, and I assume that was totally planned in support of law enforcement, so thank you. And thank you to all of our law enforcement out there. On Monday, I attended the swearing-in, or the re-swearing-in for District Attorney-elect Mike Hestron, and I was honored to be there on behalf of Canyon Lake. That was a great event. I was unable to attend the public safety meeting due to the rescheduling of the meeting, so thank you very much, Mayor Green, for attending in my stead. I've been invited and was honored to participate along with Mayor Green at a meeting with POA leaders and Ms. Darcy Burke over there from the Water District for a meeting, and that was, I think, very productive, and I'm looking forward to ongoing discussions and seeing how they, the city can make an impact and participate in that, hopefully in, by way of grants or whatever we can do. So that, to me, is a very exciting thing. I have led one meetings coming up, I'm still learning about that item, and it's definitely a learning curve for me, but I'm excited, and I'm honored to represent the city on behalf of that board. And upcoming, I'm also attending a watershed homeless conference, and I'm excited about that. But other than that, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Jordan?
Excuse me. Things were pretty quiet for me most of the last month or so, but I did, my wife and I attended the Blue Light Ceremony, which we've gone to every year that we could, and certainly, I'm impressed that is, it, for those of you who have never attended it, I certainly recommend, you know, that's honoring fallen police officers, first responders, firemen, whatever it is. It goes back to, I think, 1894 was the first officer that was killed in the line of duty, and they're all recognized, and whatever family members may be still around, attend that meeting, and they have a little get-together afterwards. Something I highly recommend for anybody, not just council members. Anybody can attend that meeting. So earlier, went to a toy drive at the store, Melissa Melinda's put that on, and she did very little politicking, walked around, talked to a few people, but gave a little, a few updates, but it was mostly a social gathering, and as I say, it was a toy drive for Christmas. I had my vector meeting, and Anna has promised me that she's going to put all these things together for me, and we're going to do a Friday Flyer article, hopefully, because I know that the way I explain it probably doesn't come out quite the way it should. The one article that I have now, this is how, how a dog could stop the global spread of malaria. And they're going to have dogs at all the airports and what have you sniffing out things for what causes malaria. Some British entomologist came up with the idea, and apparently it's working quite well. I won't go into the details, because I don't understand some of the details. But it's a, it's a great, great organization, and our, our chairman, who'd been with us 30 years or so, retired, at our last meeting, he's a world-renowned entomologist, and we're certainly going to miss him. They also had a little luncheon ceremony for George Spiliotis, for those of you who don't know who he is, he's, he's the man who was in charge of LAFCO. He just retired, so I think he was making the retirement tour, and one of the stops was Vector. Had WRCO yesterday, and it was a quite short meeting, Rick Bishop, the administrator, just kind of gave a heads-up of everything that WRCO does. Introduced to me, had about eight new council members there that are sitting on WRCO. They were introduced, and today, our city manager and myself attended a WCE meeting that Rick Bishop and Barbara Spoonhour put on, and it too, they're really getting good at making these meetings a lot shorter than they used to be. So we missed all the traffic coming home. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thanks, Jordan.
You're welcome.
Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year's 2019. I can't believe it hit us as quickly as it did. Like most of you, I think it was a pretty busy time around Christmas and the holidays and all the events, so I'll try to keep this brief, but it was pretty active. We went, started off by going to Jeff Stone's event, that was really good. Jeff's a great resource for us, because he is currently, you know, our senator, but he also was a supervisor, so he brings a lot to the table. So that was good, I was happy to see the chambers of commerce there as well, supporting our senator, and it was also a toy drive, so that was a good event. Casey and I met with Eric over at the POA, very positive meeting. I'm excited to get support from the POA, also the Board of Directors, on some of the things that we want to try to do and work together on, so I think that's going to be a good strive for us moving forward. Also attended Melissa Melinda's event with Randy and Jordan, that was a great event. She did a good job, not politicking, I think it was more of a social event. Had the opportunity to talk to her chief of staff, and also her in-district gal, and we're going to be doing a joint internship program with them. They have between seven and 12 internships, and we're going to try to bring that, whether it's one or two bodies to the city, and see if they can partner up and learn what it's like to be a part of that, and she's really excited to look forward to the possibilities of that. Yesterday, had the opportunity to go to Chad Bianco's swearing-in, as he'll say, he's the new sheriff in town, so that was a good event, a lot of good people to kind of talk about a little bit. He's claiming that he's not going to be asking money from the county, so he's going to be looking for some help from the cities. So we're going to have our work ahead of us, and we're going to have to work hard on that, and partner up with some of the other cities that are contracted out, and see if we can come up with a plan where we're not having to go more in the negative. A little bit, there's an event happening Friday, if anyone's interested, WRCO's putting on an event. It's a panel discussing business and development, shopping centers, real estate. I think it's a really good event for anyone who wants to learn about some of the expansion that's happening over by the 15 freeway in Corona. There's going to be some good shopping centers there. The downside of that is traffic will probably increase because of the new developments, so this is a good opportunity to kind of learn on that. They have some dynamic speakers that are coming forth on that. In regard to RTA, my meeting's not till the last Thursday of this month, so I'll have a report next city council meeting. And lastly, and I won't take away too much of your thunder, Mayor Green, the finance committee meeting, good meeting, have a lot of work ahead of us, I would say. We're going to have to strive pretty strongly to make some cuts, to look at some ways that we can save the city some money. I think we have a dynamic group up here that's going to be able to do that. I'm looking forward to it, but we're paying attention, we're taking notes, and we're really going to try to make a difference this upcoming year, and like the mayor said in the newspaper, I think some good things are really going to be happening in Canyon Lake, and hopefully we can keep pushing, so that's it.
All right, thank you. I didn't have much this month. It was, it was quite Happy New Year to everyone. I have been appointed to the Executive Committee of the Regional Conservation Authority. That appointment was made last Monday, this Monday, excuse me. So that was quite a surprise, so I'm now part of the executive team. Just for the citizens out there, heads up, Railroad Canyon is, westbound lanes are being worked on as, well, not as I speak, because supposedly shuts down around 4:00. But as they get farther into the utility realignment, the drainage realignment, the lane closures are going to be tougher than they've been. I think people are still accustomed going down the hill, there's a lot of traffic. I talked to the mayor of Lake Elsinore on their city website, and also, they put out on several media, social pages, alternate routes depending on where you live to bypass Railroad Canyon. To the point that even Lake Elsinore, and I think it's called Lost Hills, but I could be wrong, has actually put chip seal down on an old beat-up dirt road that they graded, put chip seal down, so it isn't as rough as it was. It's an alternate route for Canyon Hills to get over to the 15. This project's going to take probably two and a half months, and the westbound lanes are first, eastbound lanes are second. That'll be three lanes, and then the interchange will take three years to complete. So that's coming up. Had a great presentation from our battalion chief, Bishkop. He was part of the Cal Fire...
He was part of the CAL FIRE team, overhead team number four, that was in the Camp Fire, which is Paradise, California, and he actually was there 15 days, actually briefed the president on the event, and it was quite, quite the visual to see how many places were destroyed. The entire city is destroyed, all records are destroyed, all dental offices are destroyed, all schools were destroyed, the hospital was destroyed, to the point that they even had to circle in a parking lot because people couldn't get out, fire engines around in a Safeway parking lot, and put people in the middle to keep them from being incinerated. It was quite an event, and of course, it's the largest death toll we've had in California in a century, and it's unfortunate. Today is Law Enforcement Day, I didn't have that, it's a national day, and hats off to those brothers and sisters that are on the other side, I call it the other side since I was on the fire side, but it's okay. But my hat's off to you for every day you're out there providing a service to our citizens and keeping, hopefully, the bad guys where they should be. And then, lastly, I've put my name in for the San Ana River Watershed Committee, we'll find out in the next few days whether we'll be on. Again, the involvement that we have here on council with the jurisdictions and surrounding areas gives us a, not an end road, but maybe a platform to talk about certain things on a regional basis and then on a local basis, and it sure helps to know your counterparts by name and face, because when you can pick up the phone and they know you, you're not somebody calling from Cucamonga. No offense to Cucamonga, but anyway, that's it for my report, and I thank you all for showing up. We will adjourn, unless there's any other questions, we will adjourn this council meeting 1947. Next council meeting, February 6th, 2019. The open session is 6:30, closed session at 5:30. Thank you all, have a good evening.